I would like to call the meeting to order. And can we stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
David Glave?
Yes.
Karyn Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Molly Keane?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meisner?
Yes.
Denise Wheeler?
Yes.
All right, so we are going to move on to the consent agenda.
And I'd like to ask that items B and C be moved. So they become F and G down the line?
Can we have the staff report on that, Robert?
We'll just move them, we'll move the two to the end of new business.
Perfect.
So there'll be F and G.
Excellent.
I believe we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion that we need to have? Do we have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? There is none? Perfect. All right, so this portion we're going to move into is public comment. And anybody that has anything that is not on the agenda, this would be the time that you approach the podium and you can address the council. And while you're up there, when, excuse me, when addressing the accounts either under public comments or regarding to the agenda items, please go to the podium and clearly print your first and last name and address on the sign-in sheet of the podium. This ensures that we spell your name correctly in the minutes. And with that, you have a three-minute time limit. And it's all yours.
Hi, I'm Ricky Hickey. You're going to get used to me because I really enjoy meeting with you guys and hearing what you have to say. I would like to say thank you to the entire city council for both taking the time to attend the beginning of your retreat and working amicably with one another to get behind strategic goals on behalf of all Legrand citizens. I also want to say thank you for your willingness to share concerns and graciously listen to one another during council meetings. Specifically, I want to thank Councilor Mary Ann Meisner.
There you are.
For your direct comment that our community has had ample time to find ways to work together to offer shelter and safety solutions in emergency situations. It brought to light some disconnections that I've been witnessing throughout the community. And I agree with you. As a whole community, we have had ample time to put together resources, which leads me to ask, why hasn't it been done yet? And in response to my own question, a fellow community member and I have begun working on a comprehensive resource list. And if anyone in the community would like to join forces and help us tackle this growing endeavor, please get in touch with me. I also want to thank councilors David Glave and Nicole Howard for voicing your support for an update to the city charter in regards of voting. Your comments about ranked choice voting are apt when considering the best way for all voters' voices to be heard. I am grateful you both spoke up, and I am disappointed that the council avoided further discussion. I hope that an update to the city charter will be addressed again within the next several months. Whew, I'm really excited about this, excuse me. And finally, I'd like to say thank you to the city employees who attended the retreat and shared their working knowledge with the council. You are the folks in direct contact with all that is happening throughout our lovely community. You are in the throes every day, sharing your concerns and expertise with your staff and the people of our town. And you attend the council meetings with patience, understanding, and respect. I truly appreciate that from each of you. Notably, Chief Bell, your dedication to work with the task force in canceling or tackling housing crises within our community. And Carrie Bushman, are you here? Yes. For hosting the Housing Matters at the library. Also, City Manager Stroke, thank you for touching on the ways you are trying to get city information out to the public. A transparent government moves the city away from being an agency government and advances us towards a government of the people and for the community. I hope that this coming year will prove fruitful with projects and promising in progress while each council member and employee demonstrates care for our environment and for those of us who call Legrand home. We are indeed better together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor, if I could just interject one thing.
Yes, sir.
At the retreat, the council did ask for a work session on the election piece, so that is still being considered.
She tricked us.
Okay, hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So my name is Leah Carpenter, and really, I'm a resident of Third Street here in Legrand. I'm just here to update you in regards to the warming station, just what has been happening since their opening. So they've been open roughly about 33 days. The unfortunate matter is that we, as a community, have felt quite an impact from them in regards to, they had an individual clearly struggling with mental health concerns who was acting in an aggressive way, was banned from the warming station facility but then proceeded to walk down the neighborhood harassing several neighbors, including children. This was reported to the police, of course, but this is a big concern for our neighborhood and something we are hoping to avoid. Other things that we've experienced, there has been various trash, hypodermic needles that have been found around the neighborhood. And this was also in the pass-through between Third Street to Fourth Street that leads to the regional medical clinic. It was so bad that the regional medical clinic had to close and lock that pass-through, those gates. You can check in with them as to the extent, but there are employees who kind of use that pass-through who experienced the lock and then made them late for work that day. It has since been opened and communication has been made to the warming station. Unfortunately, there are several policies that we have been told by the warming station to the community, or to the neighborhood, that have also been violated. Policies as to when they open and close, policies as to who that will be admitted to the facility, et cetera. So we, as the neighborhood, are distraught. We don't know quite what to believe as far as what they say to us. It's really, we don't necessarily feel that this will get better. We're appealing to the council to kind of partner with us to maybe offer them alternative locations in town. And I know that's a big ask, but I feel like if we all partner together, think through this, maybe we can arrange a different setup for them. Because I know that, as we heard, housing is a big struggle. We understand that, we need a place for people. I just don't feel that that is in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I make a comment there? So, as I understand it, our code would never have allowed the warming station to be located in a residential area like that were it not for the state, I don't know what to call it, law, whatever it is.
The House bill.
Okay, yep. That permitted that to take place. Essentially, we have, we cannot do anything about that.
We cannot do anything about the location, that's correct.
Is there, do we have any recourse if there are ongoing safety concerns, if there are assurances that have made and violations of those assurances? Do we have any recourse to improving that situation? I mean, my understanding is they're planning on expanding this and making this larger than it currently is. My concern would be that if we're seeing this already, this far into it, I worry about, I worry about that being in that location.
Sure. From a land use perspective, our hands are essentially tied to the way that the legislation was passed. They complied with the requirements and therefore it was a shall issue situation. In terms of the, any criminal activity, that would be dealt with the same way as any other criminal activity within the community. In terms of being able to hold them accountable for the operation of the center and hold them responsible for the residents, aside from their conduct while on, on the premises, as it would apply to any of the criminal or city ordinance regarding noise and that sort of thing, we are very limited in what we can do.
Thank you, Robert. Any more questions?
I don't know what to say. I mean, I don't know how to help. It's really awkward because we have no options unless we can find, unless somebody can come up with another location that they would be willing to move to. And I think they probably explored many options already, before they moved in there, perhaps. I don't know if they did or not.
Rachel, excuse me, if you want to address the council, you have to do it from the podium within the time.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure what choices we have to help with that, what we can do. I think we all feel for you.
We could do something, but unfortunately, our hands are tied as well. And we do apologize, but unfortunately, there is, with the law, there's nothing that we can do to help, unfortunately. We'd all love to help you, but we can't. Any more comments?
Well, it seems like there's a conflict in the time, like you said, that they're open and what they're saying to the residents. Is there something we can approach them to have more of an understanding what their open hours are and closing hours are and what time the people are supposed to be out and about, or?
That would be a question for Robert.
Our challenge there is, people have a right to move about the community unless they're doing something that's criminal in nature, there's nothing that we can do to stop them from wandering around. They commit a crime, then we have the ability to try to do that, but in terms of enforcing, the city does not have the authority to enforce the warming station's internal operating procedures and processes. It's just, it's outside of our scope.
Can I say something? But they're, they're not liable, but there are certain guidelines that they have to follow. And there should, should be some kind of recourse that we could do as a city or the state, we could contact them, that if they're not abiding by those certain rules, there has to be, I don't want to say consequences, but there has to be something that we can do. And we might have to dig a little further and go into the legislation and figure that out, but they have certain guidelines that they have to follow, just like we do, and so forth. And I, I think we need to maybe search that out a little bit more, especially because it is in the heart of a neighborhood. And they're having issues like David Glave already said. I think there has to be something, and I think we need to maybe research that out. That's just my opinion.
Well, thank you.
My name's Ann Morrison, and I wanted to speak to the same issue. I just wanted to say that last year, I cooked for the warming station. I started cooking for it again this year. I'm not actually involved with it, but am acquainted with the number of the people who are on the board. And I know that it has been a huge struggle and that they worked very hard, fairly desperately over the past year to try and find a place to replace the place they had last year. I would just say that my interactions with the new staff at the warming station this year have been head and shoulders above the quality of interactions I had with the staff last year. They seem to me to be quite a bit more competent and quite a bit more concerned about how they interact with the community. So for neighbors who are having issues and problems, I would encourage them to go and talk directly to the people at the warming station about what their issues are, about what's going on. So I just threw that out there.
Thank you. At this time, is there any more public comment? None? Okay, we will move on to public hearings. At this time, I am opening the public hearing and asking the city recorder to read the rules of order in its entirety.
These rules of order are applicable to the public hearing for proposed ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on bed and breakfast ends. This is a legislative hearing, therefore councillor ex parte or pre-hearing contact does not apply. The hearing will proceed as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request a staff report. The mayor will then accept public testimony relating to the matter. There is a three-minute time limit for testimony. The order of testimony this evening will begin with that of proponents, those in favor, followed by opponents, those opposed, and ending with those neutral to the ordinance being adopted. The proceedings are being electronically recorded to be converted to written minutes. When testifying, please step to the podium and clearly print your name and address on the speaker's sign-in sheet. Please state only your name before addressing the council. Members of the city council may ask questions of the staff at any time, and subsequent to deliberation, the mayor will close the hearing.
Thank you, Stacy. At this time, can I have the staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a follow-up from our work session on Monday. And this, yes, came about last, last fall, the Planning Commission asked the city council to consider establishing a moratorium to put a pause or a freeze on new short-term rentals or bed and breakfasts, how our code defines them, in scenarios where it's a loss of a dwelling unit. And so we do still allow bed and breakfasts or short-term rentals in commercial locations or in new construction or new development where it's not the loss of an existing dwelling. October is when the moratorium first went into effect, and it actually expires, you know, by the end of this week. And so that's why I'm here tonight to ask you for an extension on that moratorium. The task that the Planning Commission had, that was presented to you on Monday, and for tonight's consideration, is they were tasked to make progress towards a solution, which that solution is establishing new codes to, to manage and regulate short-term rentals and hopefully minimize neighborhood impacts and the loss of housing in our community. And so we discussed that in, in a lot of detail on Monday night, and so I can answer questions related to that. Our next step is to go through a code amendment process. We have a few more codes to unrelated to short-term rentals that we need to refine before we start this process, but it'll probably be around May or June when we'll start it at the Planning Commission level with public hearings. And then, and then bring it to the city council with a recommendation. And so tonight, the request tonight is to ask you for an extension for six months, that's the most that can be asked for, which would push this out into August. And as we're going through that public hearing process, I anticipate I'll be back before you in July with this issue to ask you for one more extension just to allow that public hearing process and code amendment process to conclude. And hopefully, the next one won't be a six-month request, it'll just be a two- or three-month request just to allow that process to run its course. Do you have any questions?
Mike, how long does the code amendment process take? Because I know it's like 30 days, and can you explain that?
Yeah, so once we formally start the process, once you've actually developed your code and you actually start the, the public process for adoption, it starts off with a 30-day notice to the state before your very first public hearing. Then it goes to the Planning Commission, then it goes to the city council, they make a recommendation to the city council, then it goes to the city council for two readings of an ordinance. And so by the time we get to that point, yes, by the time we get to the second reading of the city council for that ordinance, it's about four months in, and then you have a 30-day window, so that's five months. So that's the city process for within the city boundaries. And then the code amendments then go to the county Planning Commission and county commissioners for the same process, which is another three-to-four month time. which is another three-to-four month timeframe to make it through the co-adoption at the county level.
So we definitely need this six-month moratorium to get this process, not even completed, but.
Right, and so the, yeah, so when we get to the July timeframe, when I come back before you again, I'll be asking you how you want to deal with the urban growth boundary piece and do you want to keep the moratorium in place? I don't know, right now our moratorium, I don't even think it applies to the urban growth boundary because that's a county one and we didn't ask the county for a moratorium. So, you know, maybe what I'm raising is kind of a moot issue because it's not applicable, so I apologize.
No, but the six months is reasonable for what has to, the process and how long that takes.
Yeah, and we're going to run about a month or two short, you know, time-wise with this extension, if you support this tonight. But we'll be really close.
And we can only make a six-month extension?
Right. Yeah, and you'll see in your CAF, I think I initially had a request to push it out to December. But since I wrote this, you know, the legal parameter behind it is the most I can ask for is six months. And so the ordinance that you have before you only has a six-month window in it.
So we, whatever we do with this, we need to amend it to change the date then because right now it's written as December 31st.
Are you looking at the CAF or are you looking at the actual ordinance?
Looking at the council action form.
Yeah, so the council action form is just kind of a description narrative. So the ordinance itself, when you, when you make a motion to support the ordinance, you're only doing a six-month extension.
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't need to amend it unless you want to change that six-month window.
Thank you, Mike. Are you getting there, Ann? Oh, I thought you were asking. At this time, we're going to invite public testimony. We will start with in favor. Oppose? Neutral? Showing none, we will move on to invite council discussion.
Well, I think that's something that we definitely need to do because we need to get the opposed taken care of before we make one way or the other.
I agree.
Yeah, and the housing issue is a big problem. And right now, we need to, we need to tackle this before we lose more. And it goes, say, six months.
Yeah.
The date is on, on the.
Okay. Any more comment? Then at this time, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed ordinance declaring an emergency and extending a temporary moratorium on bed and breakfast ends to be read by title only, put to a vote and adopted.
Second.
We've got our first and second. Any additional council discussion? Then at this time, I will ask the city recorder to read proposed ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the city council, the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, extending a temporary moratorium on bed and breakfast ends and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Stacy. Now we will ask for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There is none. And with that, we will, we have no unfinished business, so we will move on to new business. And we have the staff report, Robert? I'm sorry, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a follow-up action from your January meeting where the council adopted the no camping or prohibiting camping in public places ordinance. And in that ordinance, it identifies violations of those being a type-one violation. That is our more stringent, deal with immediate type violation or type-two violations are the typical nuisance ones where you give somebody 10 days to get into compliance. And so the type ones are, you know, pretty much solve it right now and we have the ability to issue a citation right away. The current type-one violation, under our current ordinance, has a $500 fine that's immediately issued on those. And there's some, I guess, legal concerns about whether that level of fine is too high for folks that are homeless or subject to that camping ordinance. And so the request that's before you, we discussed it in January, but the request that's before you proposes a $35 fine for those rather than the $500. And then it also has an amendment that exempts the additional court fine of $75 per day for that same action. And so at least that way, it's something that's more reasonable for, for the folks that would likely, you know, that this ordinance would be applying to. The other amendment that you'll see in this fee schedule is a request from the fire department regarding our burn permits. I think this was, kind of goes back to the beginning of the kind of the COVID period, but the city and the county, and I'm not sure if it's throughout the county, but they went to more of an online call-in type burn permit. And there's no, there was no fee associated with those call-in requests and that seems to be working really good. And so they're continuing that practice. And so the fire department asked that this fee be amended to have a zero permit, rather than just deleting it, make it a zero permit, just in case if we ever want to go back to adding a fee. It's easier than creating something new. But that's, yeah, so that's what's before you. And this fee schedule is just kind of our typical fees. If you kind of look through it, it's the typical fees that are administratively handled, mostly through the city hall, the parks and some of our public work stuff. And I think even library have a different ordinance or resolution that applies to their fees. And so this is kind of the catch-all for everybody else. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. On the PUDs and the subdivisions, you have fees like $500 plus $5 per lot, like actual costs? So why do we put the actual costs on there? What?
So the actual, well, because costs forever change and depending on the size of the development, we sometimes will start getting into needing legal opinions. We also have advertising that is expensive, that changes. And so for those types of projects, a flat fee, and this was, this was a council decision when we did that, but part of it is we're already heavily subsidizing the land use fees and trying to recoup our actual hard dollar costs that we put out. And so the fees are really low to start with. But the actual cost piece is to capture those additional costs that we can't anticipate that are, like a subdivision, we have to do mailed notice to a lot more property owners. The advertising is a lot more expensive. There's more public hearings involved. And so the costs, the costs just add up more and so it's hard to do a flat fee. And the alternative, we wanted a flat fee, would be to do our best guess on estimating what the high end of that is. But then it's, you know, then you have, you know, some folks paying a higher fee than others and it's a little less consistent from a fairness standpoint. So that's why we've gone this route.
So when someone applies, then will they have an estimate of what the actual costs are going to be? Or is that going to be on the back end? I just wanted, is it transparent of, okay, because you have this 30-house subdivision, we're guessing it's going to cost X?
Yeah, and we do that.
We're giving them that.
Yeah, we do that, yeah. And the right, we don't get a lot of subdivisions and planned, you know, developments to really ballpark it. But we know that, you know, some of our advertising costs might be in the couple hundred dollar range per advertising. And so we can kind of ballpark within a few hundred dollars. The right-of-way vacation ones, the entire application is based on actual costs. And so then what we tell folks is just based on just the averaging of all the ones that we've done in the past. This is what they've averaged, but this is what the highest one was. And then we give them the choice whether they want to proceed, knowing that there's the potential it could be up to this amount if it's more complicated and has some other issues. But I feel it's as transparent as we could get.
And they're not going in blind.
Yeah, they're definitely not going in blind and they're making a decision as to whether or not, you know, being within a couple hundred dollars of a best guess is close enough. And usually our fees are just a drop in the bucket for what they're paying for all of the other elements. And so, yeah.
Is there any more questions, Mike? Thank you, Mike. At this time, we're going to invite public comment. So we will move on to counselor discussion. With none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed resolution, repealing resolution number 4774, series 2019, and establishing certain administrative fees and enforcement penalties be read by title only, put to a vote and passed as presented.
Second. We've got our motion and second. We had no discussion before, so I'm going to skip over that one. At this time, can I have the city reporter read proposed resolution by title only?
The resolution of the city council of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, establishing certain administrative fees and enforcement penalties for the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, repealing resolution 4774, series 2019, and all other resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Stacy. And at this time, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None? It passes. You're going to be very busy tonight, aren't you, Mike?
Yeah, two more?
Well, let's start off our next one.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a request for your permission or authorization for myself or my department and our landmarks commission to apply for a historic preservation grant. We have two grant opportunities that are available to us. And we're, right now, we're trying to make a decision on which one we're going to apply for. But the grant that we are hoping to apply for is to hire a consultant to go through the historic landmarks designation process to get the Carnegie Library listed on the national register. And this is something, I mean, Carnegie libraries all across the country are listed and we have one of the few that aren't. And being a building that we own and then that we lease out to a, another nonprofit-type entity, funding is fairly limited for the most part for, you know, for folks to maintain and improve and restore. And having that building on the national register will open up opportunities for grants that currently are not available because it's not listed. Yeah, and so it's something that's been on our landmarks commission's wish list for quite a while and it's been on the state's wish list as well as a number of other folks in the community. And we feel it's time to use our grant opportunity to focus on that project and get that done. We're estimating it to be somewhere in the $10,000 to $16,000 range for the total project. We're hoping it'll be less than that. But we've gotten a couple ballpark estimates depending on how much work is, and there's a lot of work that's already been done. And so what, the estimates that we have are generally from starting from scratch and doing the research of history. And since we have so much of that already, we're hoping that the cost of doing this project will be less than what we've estimated. But, and that's also playing a role into which grant we apply for because once we get a bid, if it ends up being, you know, less than the 16 and ends up being less than 10, we're probably going to focus our resources on a different grant to.
How much do you, what amount of grant are you asking for?
So, so what, so I guess the outcome of this, if you, if you support this and authorize this process, the grant request will be somewhere in the $10,000 to $16,000 range, depending on what our bids come in at and which grant we apply for. We have to come up with 50% match of real money. So you'll see me again at the budget committee or in my budget, you'll see and ask for that match in hard dollars to go with that. And so we're hoping it's going to be less and it'll be whatever 50% is of the grant. And so we're crossing our fingers that it'll be much less than $10,000 and our 50% might be $5,000 bucks.
So getting on the register of historic places, would that help or hurt getting an elevator?
Oh, it'll certainly help. Yeah, because.
I don't know if they preserve things that, you know, if they didn't originally have an elevator.
Yeah, so a lot of it, I mean, so it depends on what we ask for and how, you know, when it gets to the design phase of where they put that elevator and what it looks like and so forth. Because there are, you know, a lot of strings attached to how you design things when you're on the national register. But they are very big on the viability of historic buildings. And so you can get grant money for plumbing and electrical and heating and cooling upgrades and all kinds of things because they want that building to get restored and occupied. And, and there's a whole thing with, in fact, we're going through a process here. Next week, the landmarks commission is meeting on the grand staircase where they're looking at demolition and a full reconstruction with something brand-new. And that's getting grant money. So it's, you know, so when you kind of look at where that grant money gets allocated and what they can use it for, you can use it on brand-new stuff that is, as long as it's compatible.
I'm all for accessibility, so.
Yeah, so I'm, so we're hoping that this will help them with some elevator stuff. There's other handicap accessibility things. There's a lot of brick masonry, repointing work that needs to be done. There's a whole bunch of things that need to be done with that building and we have a laundry list of things that are just hard for folks to afford to do.
So Mike, I have a kind of a question. The day that, why has it taken so long since it was built in 1912? I mean, the day after the Elgin Opera House was there, we applied for grants. And that's why you have new bathrooms and all that and handicap and all that stuff. Why has it taken us so long to get this going?
I don't know if I could answer that other than having a motivated party that takes the lead on getting it listed. And in the past, we have put the responsibility on either the tenant or the people that are tasked with, you know, taking care of that building and doing those programs. And I think there has been some efforts in the past. They've done some preliminary work, which we are using to do this. But it's one of those things our landmarks commission says, well, the, you know, the community's not able to pull themselves together enough to do this project and carry it through. And so they have taken it upon themselves and they are asking for your supports, that they will take the lead on it and get it done. And so that's kind of where we're at. I really can't answer your question because I don't know why it hasn't been done before this other than it just didn't have the leadership and the folks committed to doing it all the way through.
Thank you, Mike. At this time, I would like to invite public comment. There is none. We'll move on to counselor discussion.
This looks like a great idea.
I think it's about time we do it.
Yeah.
This is one of the buildings I think there's a lot of value in upgrading this and preserving it. Art Center East does a lot of good things in this community.
I agree.
Certainly in favor of it.
And the grants that are available are incredible.
And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the community development department be authorized to apply for an historic preservation grant to designate the Carnegie Library to the National Register of Historic Places. And further, that city managers be authorized to sign grant documents for.
Second.
We've had a motion and second. Any more counselor discussion? Well, none. Now I want to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None? All right, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this, this is my final one. This, this request is for you to accept a bid proposal for hiring an economic consultant to do our goal nine economic needs analysis. This is a project that, I mean, it probably dates back, you know, quite a ways, but it started at least in our file anyway, last year, when we did our goal-setting session with the council in early 2022. And then this is a project that was funded in, in the current fiscal cycle. And it's just taken us a little while to get ourselves organized, find a consultant to do this project. And we went out to bid and we found our low bidder and a very qualified consultant that has done other projects in our region. And so we're really excited. And so this is, because of our late start, this is a project that, I mean, they're ready to get started as soon. to get started as soon as we sign the contract, hopefully tomorrow. And then we'll get rolling on it, but it will not be completed by the end of June, as we had hoped because of our late start, so it'll likely spill over into July. And so this will be a project that kind of carries forward into another month or so, into the next budget year. But this is phase one of what I would expect to be a two-phased project, because we're fairly confident through our, our needs analysis for economic development that we're going to find we have a shortage of commercial land for our next twenty-year projection. And we're going to need to then go into the phase-two piece where, once we know how big that need is and how many acres we need for the next twenty years, where are we going to consider expanding our boundaries to find more commercial land? And that's, that was something we originally hoped to fold into this, but as we started going out and getting bids, we, some of the feedback, we had, we're having a hard time getting folks to bid unless we pulled that from the project because we didn't plan for enough funding to do both of those, because it's, the second half is a fairly significant project just by itself. So, so we've scaled it back to just the needs analysis, and then we'll be looking at an urban growth boundary expansion in phase-two based on what the conclusions of this is.
But I did read in here that they said that part of phase-two is going to be covered. I mean, they thought it would be a good starting point for you.
Oh, yeah. I think the conclusion of this is going to, it's going to work well into our phase-two. And if we're happy with this consultant, I would hope that we could then have conversations with them about extending a contract or entertaining a different contract for them to continue and do the phase-two for us, but we'll see how phase-one goes first and.
I just understood it said that a lot of it would maybe help address some of the things that you'll need in phase-two.
Yeah, and it will. Yeah, so, so we're really excited that, you know, for these consultants and the other communities that have used them in the region. I think they've done some work for, for the tribe in Umatilla County. They've done work in Hepner. They've done a lot of work in rural communities, and they're, they're based out of Idaho. And so I think they're, the culture that they're used to dealing with is very similar to La Grande, and so I, I think they're a good fit for us.
Thank you, Mike.
And you said that this is already budgeted this year?
It is.
Okay.
Is there any more questions for Mike? Thank you. And at this time, we will invite public comments. There are none. Counsel discussion.
I like that the lowest bidder is also the highest scorer on compatibility or readiness, so. That works well.
All right, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move that we award the two thousand twenty-three Goal Nine Review and Economic Commercial Land Needs Analysis Contract Appoint Consulting in the amount of fifty thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, as shown in the bid proposal. And further, the City Manager Stroke be authorized to execute the contract documents for the project. Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Any additional counselor discussion that we have? And I will ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Good evening, Kyle.
Good evening. Not Mike.
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Counselors, the next council action on your docket there in front of you is for you to consider awarding the bid for the wastewater treatment plant control system modernization project. This is a project that we put out for Anderson and Perry to design and also put out for bid, so they controlled the procurement process for us. You'll see from the letter in the packet that they forwarded not only the bid tab but a letter supporting the wording of this contract to the sole bidder. So just as a quick overview of what a wastewater treatment plant control system consists of, it is basically the industrial controls or the more commonly known SCADA system. This controls all of the, you know, sensors, the switches, every, the alarms, the things inside the treatment plant that help keep it running when the operator isn't right there. It also notifies the operator when changes need to be made, so on and so forth. So be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I did have one, and that was just, it was on the bid sheet itself, I think. But I was just curious to, I forgot to get my fingers working here. Where it said the, the engineer's estimate, so who was the engineer that estimated this?
That would be Anderson and Perry did the engineer estimate.
So they estimated three hundred and twenty thousand, and they came in at three, okay.
Yes, that's correct. In today's bidding environment, it is really kind of a shot in the dark. You're really at the mercy of the supply chain. You never know when these electronic parts are going to go on short order, and then they triple in value in under a month. So it's pretty common to see, see jumps over the engineer's estimate lately.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Kyle?
We budgeted four hundred thousand.
We budgeted four hundred thousand. Luckily, we have superintendents who are very conservative and have the foresight to see some of this stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
This time I invite public comments. There is none. Counsel discussion.
Just comment, it's nice to see a local bidder.
Yes.
Entertain a motion.
Move that we award the wastewater treatment plant control system modernization two thousand twenty-two project to all phase electrical contracting in the amount of three hundred ninety-one thousand, as shown in the bid summary. And further, that City Manager Stroke be authorized to execute the contract documents for the bid for the wastewater treatment plant control system modernization project.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Any additional counsel discussion? There is none. I will ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Thank you.
Mr. Robert. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Your next item is to adopt the retreat summary in the city slash district managers, managers' top priorities for the coming fiscal year. And the way that these fiscal year priorities work, they essentially kind of overlap between the years. Sometimes we'll add one, or one will fall off, but it's a bit of a continuum. Several of them are, are carryovers from the current year. So the City Council met on the twenty-fourth of January and went through a pretty extensive list of topics and some great conversation. You've probably taken a look at the calendar that you have for the coming year, and there are pretty much no Mondays free for the next, I don't know, ever?
Yeah.
It was kind of interesting because at the conclusion of this, I was just thinking, well, we don't have a whole lot of work sessions that I remember us talking about coming out of it. And then I actually sat down and started putting the calendar together, and I think we have maybe five free Mondays this year. Not quite that bad, but pretty close.
It's like you're rubbing it in a little bit.
I know, right? Well, we did have a conversation that we would have to wait and see what the NFL schedule looked like, the sequencing for the fall as to whether or not we needed to move one up or down a week. But in the packet, the way that it's structured is the comments in red are actually the summary of the conversation and essentially identifies the guidance that the council gave. And then at the back is the list of the top priorities, and those are in suggested priority order, just to clarify that. And I'll just touch on those for those that don't have this in front of them that might be watching or are in the audience. Top priority is street and road infrastructure, and that's to act on the recommendations of the Parking, Traffic Safety, and Street Maintenance Advisory Commission to address the condition of the infrastructure, including potential funding. And we have dedicated virtually all of the ARPA funds towards that, and we're also have a conversation about, in the fairly near future, taking a serious look at a gas tax. One of the benefits of a gas tax is about half of the revenues would be from people that are passing through the community, and we would derive the benefit of the dollars going in to help with our street maintenance, street infrastructure. Housing is the second priority, and here we're going to continue to implement the comprehensive housing production strategies as were adopted by the City Council. And again, housing was mentioned this evening during public comments and concerns about that. Next top priority, economic development, and to continue to implement the Urban Rental Plan and the Economic Development Strategy as approved by the City Council and the Urban Rural Agency. There's some overlap there. Staffing, continue to take the necessary actions to address critical staffing issues, including but not limited to hard-to-fill positions and succession planning for key positions. And on that topic, just to make you aware, I think I may have mentioned this perhaps at the retreat, but we're going to sign an MOU with the fire department, the fire union, about extending the response radius, hopefully to make it more attractive for people to come and serve as firefighters, ideally firefighter paramedics with the City of La Grande. Because that's a collective bargaining issue, you will see an action at your March meeting to ratify that, but we did not want to delay recruiting with that new timeframe. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. Next one is fiscal management, continuing to manage the city's finances within limited resources to provide the highest possible level of service to the citizens of La Grande. I'm sorry, the city of La Grande, which I view as interchangeable city and citizens. General fund capital improvements, identify funding sources and strategy to address major capital needs. Emergency management planning, and this is one where we actually combine the wild, the urban wildland interface with some additional planning that we want to do in the emergency field. So in concert with Union County and other agencies, take actions to assure La Grande is prepared in the event of emergency, including but not limited to major incidents, flooding, wildfire, or other natural disasters, and to update the city's emergency operation plan. And then finally, FEMA maps and land use code amendments, take all required actions regarding the FEMA flood plane map updates submitted, including but not limited to responding to any requirements as needed throughout the process. And then complete the revisions and adoption of the city's land development codes as necessary to incorporate those changes. So those are the top priorities, I believe in the sequence that the council wanted to see them. The Urban Rural Agency will also adopt these here when they meet, you meet, a little bit later on this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Rob, how far are you extending the fire to recruit, the fire area?
So currently, it is fifteen air miles, and we're changing it to one hundred road miles.
That's quite a ways, though.
The good news is that we have had someone that would be outside of our current footprint that has expressed interest if we're making that change, so we'll see how that goes.
So that person would have a hard time giving you if emergency, we needed him right away? Or he?
We had quite a bit of conversation about that in terms of our ability to get folks back. And the reality is, depending upon the incident, first of all, we have interagency agreements in place where there's a fire in La Grande, you've got La Grande Rural, you have other jurisdictions that are coming, just like if there's a fire in Island City or in Cove, there's a lot of mutual aid that occurs. And also, even some of our local, you know, firefighters, if we do have an emergency, maybe out of town, maybe unable to respond. So it's, it's really kind of hit and miss, depending upon the day and what's going on, who is actually in the area and available. And as we look at the difficulty that we've had hiring firefighter paramedics particularly, we're getting down to the critical, I think we're actually kind of past the critical stage, and we really need to solve that. And having people that are on staff, professional firefighters that are also paramedics that are here for the forty-eight hours of their shift, and then potentially could come back maybe, or could travel in to, you know, fill a shift to cover for vacations, we think that this is an important change to make.
Are we still having firemen who are taking advantage of the paramedic training?
We have three that are going to be doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any more questions for Robert? With that, I will entertain a public comment. There are none. I invite counselor discussion.
I think this is a good move. Yeah. We need to increase our staffing, and they're working forty-eight-hour shifts, and they live in Pendleton. I don't think it's going to matter that much.
I don't think that's unusual either.
No.
Living outside the area.
And we also have casuals that could fill that emergency role, that unexpected.
So did we agree on the hundred road miles?
As City Manager on behalf of the city, in consultation with the association, we reached that. And so that's our position. The City Council ultimately can approve it or not. And if not, then the current contract language of fifteen road miles would stay the same.
Because a hundred and ten is to Ontario, and that's, I don't know, that's, to me, that seems a little far, but on Pendleton seems, you know, doable, but.
And Chief Cornford and I had quite a bit of conversation about, you know, should it be a hundred miles? Should it be ninety minutes travel time? What should it be? And we landed on a hundred miles, but there is a provision in it that allows for me to grant an exception on a case-by-case basis to that hundred miles. So we, we added some flexibility, and that's not flexibility that's in the current agreement.
I think it's a good idea, and I think.
It's definitely a good idea.
To help us bring new, I think it's a great job. Thank you, Rob. Any more discussion? Nope. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the city district manager's top priorities for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, as discussed during the annual council retreat on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and outlined on the attached City Council Retreat summary be adopted as presented. Second.
We've had the motion and a second. Any more discussion by the council? With that, I will ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none.
Thank you.
Thank you. On our next one. Hello, Mr. Stew. Can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Would you prefer both of these together in a summary? Would you like me to separate them out? They're similar agreements.
I asked to have this polled. I am fine with them being together. They're both really similar. I just thought it would be good to have.
Yeah.
With them polled, though, we have to do a separate.
You'll do, you'll do two votes, but he can do a encompassing staff.
Yeah, great. So these agreements with EOU and the La Grande School District are for the use and similarly of the baseball fields at Pioneer Park. So we'll do the similarities first, and then the school district has another nuance. Essentially, as you know, the EOU and the school district invested a lot of money into the turf, the artificial turf at both Triice Community Field and Optimus Field for the infields. As a part of that agreement, the school district superintendent approached me and said that he would like to invest in a longer-term replacement fund for that field, and EOU felt, followed suit. So as you can see by the fee schedule, there's a couple of different fees. Let's look at the EOU version first. It talks about annual fee paid for rental facilities plus lighting, and it also talks about a replacement cost for turf. So the city's budget enables us to hold that money in what's called a, well, it could be, I don't know, I defer to you, reserve account or grants and donations fund, one of those. We would bill each year, and they would, that money would be set aside for future turf replacement. So if you looked at the school district funding and the EOU funding, it's around seventy-eight thousand dollars, seventy-eight, five, thirty-nine specific. There's an escalator in each of those years, as you can see, for inflation. And at the end, this field, the field cost replacement currently is about a hundred thousand dollars, so the city will have to close that gap when it comes time to replace that turf. But three-quarters of that money, today's dollars, is, is a great buy-in from the district and EOU. So that's just simply baseball fields. Any questions about that or any specifics you wanted to pull out of the baseball agreement stuff?
What's the life of the field?
About ten years. Yeah, depending on, you know, weather and use and et cetera, et cetera. You can see EOU has a fourth-year option. That's because they're hoping to build or construct their own facility within that timeframe. Not sure that's going to happen. There's a lot of work to do there, but. There's a lot of work to do there, but it could. So right now, the EOU agreement's only for three, with an option to go four. The school district doesn't have any desire to build their own facility, so there's just a 10-year because of that replacement.
So you did say that the money that's, if it's not used for the turf, it will continue to be there to be used in the future?
Not quite. The money that's earmarked in these agreements will be set aside for the future turf replacement.
Right.
And what I mean is artificial turf. It won't, in other words, the general fund won't be able to touch that money. It will be dedicated for that project.
That's what I was asking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good clarification. Any other questions about baseball? I want to talk about school district facilities a little bit, too. This is pretty unique to us. A long time ago, there were interagency agreements between the city and the school district to offer a variety of programs and activities. There were split staff costs between the two agencies. There was lots of creative things done. Then when I got here eight years ago, it was we pay you for gym space and facility space, and you pay us for field space. So we ran the numbers, and it was really a wash. So it didn't make a lot of sense to pay each other the same amount every year. Keep in mind, the swimming pool, the swim portion rental of the swim team is outside this agreement. So this is just gym and classroom space. So this agreement basically details that we can have classroom and gym space for no fee, and they can have ball field space for no fee, eliminating all the paperwork and hassle, as well as benefiting the city as we grow our youth programs into the schools, and potentially more and more after-school program sites or other social recreation programs that may or may not happen after the school day is over. This is also handy because of the passage of the school bond and the extra facilities that they're constructing that we, you know, the whole community will have access to. But I think it makes a lot of sense, obviously financially, and as our growth potential expands to the youth programs and more, we won't have a cost when it comes to district facilities. Just make good sense. So that's your summary of the two. Any other questions about the school district one? It's a little bit different.
What do you use Willow for? Is that the after-school program?
Yeah, and basketball. We're in there every Saturday for seven hours.
And meeting in the classroom?
Yes. We're in a classroom and a gym every day at Willow.
Okay. And you left Reveria. So what's, is anything over at Reveria?
Well, I don't know. We still use Reveria a lot for youth basketball on Saturdays.
But if you don't really have to.
We don't have any daily programs there, no.
Okay.
No, that was cost prohibitive.
Okay.
To keep the cost of the program down for parents.
Okay.
And just, I mean, just since I'm here, we also offer full scholarship programs for folks. We have a full scholarship policy. That's not advertised enough. We have programs that can get, that take away the barriers for fees for our programs.
Oh.
So in case you didn't know that, we have a fund set aside for that. Put in the minutes.
I think it's highly important to work together for the kids.
Correct.
I think it's very important.
Just kind of a no-brainer, in my opinion, and I'm really excited that EOU and the district stepped up with that turf replacement, as well as EOU with their rental fees with the escalator stuff. So good.
Any more questions for Stu? With that, we will entertain public comments on either item. There is none. Councillor's discussion?
I think this is brilliant. It's proactive, it's fair, it's setting aside money for the replacement instead of all of a sudden saying, oh, shoot, we need $100,000, where are we going to find it? So, and probably saves a lot of staff time of billing and paying bills and that sort of thing. So, good job, Stu.
With that, I will entertain a motion on 3B.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the agreement between the city of La Grande and Eastern Oregon University for the use of Pioneer Park baseball and softball fields.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. Any more additional council discussion? There is none. I will ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None. Now we will move on to 3C. At this time, do we need any more council discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the agreement between the city and the La Grande School District for the city waiving fees for baseball, softball field rental, and the district waiving fees for the use of gym and classroom space.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. Any additional council discussion? There is none. I will ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There is none. All right, our next item, Union County Commissioner update. Good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councillors. How are you this evening?
Good.
Thanks for having me. Guess what? I'm still your liaison for this year. Nobody showed up at the meeting to complain, so I really, you know, thank you for doing that. I even brought it up, and no one was there, so here I am for the next year with you guys. I really appreciate that. The legislation has kicked off going full force. I think there are going to be a record of bills this year, somewhere around 10,000. I know I'm exaggerating, but it seems like there's 10,000. If there's any testimony that you need to do on a bill that you feel that is very pertinent for the city of La Grande, let me know. I have all of the instructions for doing it online, or if you want to do it in person, you have to sign up. They're only allowing so many people in the building due to construction. So if you go there and they have five fifth-grade classes in there, you may not be able to testify because of the capacity rate. But there is one House bill that I'd like you to all follow. It's House Bill 2635. That is the fair funding bill that Representative Levy and Senator Hansel put forward for the $1 million to hopefully complete the wastewater project at the fairgrounds. So fantastic job with Representative Levy and Senator Hansel. I see it going to Ways and Means. I'll be testifying on it when that happens. If they do the roadshow, I'll do it there as well. But I'll be over in Salem every single month until the end of the session to knock on doors and push that forward with a lot of other bills as well. So if there are any bills that you want me to push for it as well, please come to me or the other commissioners, but we'll be frequently over in Salem to talk to legislation. So I know LOC helps with that as well, but look at me as someone that's actually going to go over there and discuss stuff with legislation. With that, we did approve the Morgan Lake safety improvements, Morgan, I'm sorry, Morgan Lake Road safety improvements. The construction of that will start in 2024. We have a contract with ODOT. So I mean, it's the most costly road we have in Union County, and there are a lot of spots there that people do roll off the road, very, very dangerous, and I think this is a very good move. Very dangerous road. And having more safety precautions up there, the better. And with that, February 8 is our mandatory Idaho meeting. So if you would like to join us, 9:00 a.m., if you want to see three commissioners force to do something, it's your chance. But if there's any other questions, I can answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any staff comments? Oh, yeah.
I'll get up before Stu. I don't have the energy to match that. First update is a program update with ODOT. Last week, we were notified that there has been a program shift over at ODOT. So one of our funding mechanisms is when the federal government sends money down through the state that trickles to counties and cities, there's a state fund program where they take those federal dollars, they use them on their state roadway projects that are already required to meet federal requirements, and they funnel us money that has actually cleaned the federal requirements so that we can complete our projects cheaper. So we're not having to complete the federal-level environmental and property acquisition pieces. Well, ODOT informed us early last week that they're doing away with the program. And as part of that, anything that you're holding in your account where our savings has to be spent by December 31 of this year. So for the city of La Grande, that's in essence $700,000 that needs to be spent by December. So, working with Robert, we've already got a strategy in mind. So one of the things that you may see is that we will use that funding to pave ARPA roads or previously approved roadways for the ARPA funding. With ARPA, we have a little bit more flexible dollars. We can move those on to different streets at the end if we find that all of the projects are completed. We also have a few other projects planned that we could probably use those dollars for. We're just trying to build a strategy where we don't lose the flexibility of where we can spend those dollars. We don't want to end up spending them on our collectors and then not be able to spend the other funding on oil mat residential roads. So just so you're aware, big trouble. We caught it. We're ahead of the game. So. Second one is just a brief update on the Second Street project that's planned for this spring. We ordered water pipe, so as you remember, we're replacing that nice 18-inch aging steel main beneath Second Street. We're going to take off from the end of the hill. Project was just south of Penn, and we're going to head to K. So we ordered our steel mainline pipe about six months ago. We are told it may ship in March. So we're a little on edge because we can't be in the project until it gets here, but just so you know, we are anticipating tearing up Second Street around April. So in conjunction with the hospital closure and now closing off portions of Second Street through M and N, it's going to be getting interesting. So you may be fielding calls on that when we start advertising the beginning of that construction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors. I just wanted to give you a look through the lens of the police department on the warming station on Third Street and what we have been doing there and what we have experienced through your police department. Last week, I met personally with Leah Carpenter and a fair number of neighborhood residents that kind of have a neighborhood group. I just wanted to get with them personally, share with them what we're doing, answer questions that they might have. We talked about the calls for service that we had experienced at the previous location for the warming station, talked specifically about a few of the calls for service that we have experienced up there so far since they opened. And I want to offer you that with a full measure of respect for the impact that the neighborhood has felt, because any, it's a very, very quiet neighborhood. I don't know if you've all been through there, but really much of a change at all would have, there would, there's absolutely going to be a felt impact. But that being the case, we really honestly haven't had very many calls for service there from the police department. There was a few of them that were discussed, no criminal activity or charges that were pursued, but there was some resolution by just a couple of individuals. But we are within our resource limitations being in the neighborhood as much as we can just to provide that presence. I also had a discussion with the residents in the neighborhood about the possibility of taking a look at streetlights and whether or not they were effective and all operational. So we're working on that. And during that, that exercise of a conversation, we identified a few other non-related to the warming station code violations that we have looked at. So anyway, just wanted to let you know kind of what we're seeing actually through the police department in that particular neighborhood. So if you have any questions for me about it, happy to answer them for you.
We appreciate what you're doing, though.
Well, we're doing what we can.
I know, but you just take that time to go over there. That's probably reassuring to them.
Yeah. You know, really, we're just doing everything that we can in order to keep those communication lines open so that if there is, even if it's something that they're not, the neighbors in that area are not certain if it's, you know, against the law or what can be done, just want to make sure that that avenue is there so that they can reach out to us. And then if we have a particular issue, then we can also share that with them. So, it's an effort.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I like that approach.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I'll wrap it up with the fund department news. So we installed a new book in the story walk at Riverside Park this morning in the really cold windy day. So if you haven't visited that, I would encourage you to walk along the pathway and take a friend, family, read the story. It's a cute Valentine's book right now. Also, the seed library is out at the library. Encourage you to come on down and get some seed packets and get prepared for gardening this summer. That's all. I guess Stu's coming, so I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anybody else going to go after me? I won't make any terrible mic.
No, you're good.
Okay. Couple of announcements. One is we, I think I told most of you at the retreat, but it's important to say publicly, we received fully funding for the public art project in front of the library that the artist is working on now out of Umatilla County. So that will be installed hopefully by fall, early fall, maybe mid-fall. But anyway, that's exciting. That's a $50,000 project that was completely funded by grants and donations. So awesome, great, I'm excited for that. And in case you didn't know, Friday is the employee banquet. I'm sure somebody's going to say that, but more importantly, it's Robert Strope's birthday. So Friday, and we, you know, staff had some things planned because we have this weekly meeting usually on Thursdays. However, he canceled it today, so I figured we'd just move the announcement in whatever to tonight because we won't be meeting tomorrow. So I just want to make sure that everybody knew, and, you know, I'll leave it to you, Mayor, if you want to lead the song or anything, but anyway. In the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. So quick question, Stu. When's this story walk going to get extended?
Story walk is for libraries.
I know, but you guys were going to extend that trail, right?
Okay. Thanks, Councillor Glebe.
We need longer books. We want chapter books worth the.
We're currently working, so we do have an extension funded for the trail at Riverside Park. We're working with the property owner neighbors right now to kind of, Public Works has drawn that up, and we are, we're at that point where we're going to be laying asphalt hopefully this summer and completing that project. So yes, I'm not sure I'll entertain more stories during that, but I would love to entertain some outdoor fitness stations along that loop or some other opportunities for the public, so.
How long is the extension?
1,600 feet.
Oh, that's.
Whatever that, do your math with your 5,200.
Quarter mile.
Yeah. Anybody else want to throw a curveball? Okay.
Thank you, Stu. Is there any more staff comments for this evening?
Look at the glare.
Mr. Robert, it's your turn.
Thank you.
You can swing back if you like.
We'll be looking for a new parks and recreation. Should be pretty easy to fill.
No.
Rob, some of them couldn't hack it as a library director. See, I get to talk last, Stu. Thank you for the birthday. Just to let you know, we did receive the draft financials from the auditor for both the renewal and the city, and we're going through those now. And we're hoping to be able to do the audit report work session on the 13th. We have that penciled in. We haven't confirmed that with the auditor, but I just wanted to mention that, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And at this time, for the new councillors, this is your time to make any comments that you would like to make. So we'll start at that end. Molly, would you like to make any comments this evening?
It's a learning curve.
Yeah.
I'm learning it quickly, I guess. So, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy, that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Nicole?
One quick announcement, that there's a group in town who's trying to raise funds for the pump track at Pioneer Park, and they hit $80,000, which they are on track to do. That will qualify them for the local government grant. So there is a raffle going right now. You can go online to Blue Mountain Single Track Club, buy yourself a raffle ticket, and there's all kinds of prizes. But there's been a huge amount of lift by that community group, and I think the pump track is going to actually happen. That's it.
Perfect. For him?
I've got nothing other than we're going to be really busy this year.
Yes, we will be. Denise?
I'm just saying, I am learning, and I appreciate all your kindness and your patience with me and all of you as well.
Perfect. I would just like to thank everybody who was part of the retreat. I think it was a really good night, couple nights. I thank the staff, too. They did a great job of getting everything ready for us, and I do appreciate that. And with that, we are adjourned as a council, and everybody stay where you are because our next thing is the urban renewal agency. And everybody, stay where you're at because our next thing is Herbal Renewal Agency. Okay? That was a quick question. All right. All right, I am going to call to order. We have a roll call, please.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
David Glebe?
Yes.
Karine Udo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Here.
Holly King?
Here.
Mary Ann Mead?
Here.
All right. Agenda approval. Do we have a motion?
You don't take a motion for that. Just as there's anything we would want to change, so you can just move into the consent agenda item.
Oh, okay. So we're moving on to the consent agenda.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Perfect. We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's none. I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Aye? Oppose? Thank you. All right, we are going to go to public comment. At this time, this is the portion of the herbal renewal where if you have something that is not on the agenda, please approach the podium. There's none. All right. Public carings, there is none. Unfinished business, there is none. New business. Robert, we have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the agency. The agency has an agreement with the Liberty Theater folks. I think it's actually Main Street downtown originally was the group that came to the agency and asked for funding for the project. The agency has a loan agreement that will convert to a grant if the project is completed with a certain level of financial commitment. And they're very close to doing that. The kind of last dollars in appear to be from the EDA. It's a pretty significant funding piece. But one of the requirements that they have is that the EDA be in first position in, from a lien perspective, on the property. Currently, the agency is in first position with a $150,000 lien. There's a promissory note that includes minus 5.5% interest and all of the interest that has accrued and the principal is forgiven if they meet the requirements, and they're very close to doing that. I think it has to be done sometime this summer. We may have to do a small extension on that, but we're in pretty good shape there. The document that's in your packet has not been completely filled out. I literally got it a couple of days before we put the packet together. But essentially, it's an instrument that places EDA ahead of the agency in the succession of the lien. I would expect that this project will be done and completed, and we'll be in a position to forgive that loan this fall. So this is, from my perspective, a relatively simple housekeeping function. Because there's an agreement in place, it will also require that we do amend the agreement to reflect this change. And so what I'm asking the agency to do tonight is to approve this, to include allowing me to finalize and sign any documents that are required to complete the entire process to include an amendment to that loan, which would just address the lien position. And I'll be happy to answer whatever questions you have. There are also members of the board here that can answer questions specifically if you have any.
Is it just common practice doing something like this?
For something like this, where the EDA is stepping in and providing funding, it is, yes.
It's just common practice, yeah.
And as you said, Robert, they are close to completing their task to become forgiveness.
They've got the dollars in, they just need to complete and open them, and they're done.
So we want them to finish this.
We do.
Yes, we do.
And we don't want to not have them get $500,000 because we want to stay in first position on a lien that we won't have this time next year.
Any more questions for Robert? At this time, I will invite public comment.
Hi, my name is Kelly Decoti. I am on the Board of the Liberty Theater Foundation. As I'm sure at least some of you are aware, I've been before you before. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the board. Our board chair, Ashley O'Toole, wished that he could be here tonight. He wanted me to let you all know that. He is picking up his mother from the airport. She's flying in from Missouri. So that's where he is tonight. As Robert put it out there, we have made enormous progress in the last couple of years. If anyone made it into any of the open houses over the summer, you can see the tremendous progress, that it actually looks like a theater in there now. So with that said, I would just reiterate everything that Robert has already said. This will bring the project to completion, will get us to occupancy, and will lead to the loan forgiveness anyway. So I appreciate your vote. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Nick Decoti. He is the foundation's grant manager, and he can speak more to the status of this specific grant if there are any questions about them.
Yeah, just kind of wanted to let you guys know where the project is. The bid package is being created right across the street at Associated Designs. Hopefully about 50% through that. This is one of the documents that needs to go to EDA in order for them to kind of sign off on our bid package and going out to bid. So we're gathering those last few documents, including this one. And we're hoping in the next month and a half that there's an advertisement on the street. And we've got contractors crawling around in there. And hopefully in another few months, they're in there working, and we get it done. So any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Any more public comment? I see none. Agency discussion. I am actually glad to see this coming to the end. It's been a long time, and I'm looking forward to see the final project.
It's been a long time coming.
Yes, it has.
And thank you for all your hard work. Definitely. And it makes perfect sense to move this expedition.
Yes, yes, it does.
For everybody's sake.
Yes. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that District Manager Strope be authorized to draft and sign an amendment to the Liberty Theater Loan Agreement, granting the EDA first priority lien position on the property and to sign any related documents required by the EDA.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Any more additional agency discussion? I see none. And with that, I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Aye? Anybody opposed? There is none.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Robert?
Mr. Mayor, members of the agency. As with the city council, you did meet in a retreat on the 25th of January. In your package, you have the summary of that with the specific guidance that was provided by the agency. And as with the city council one, this will form kind of the foundation for the budget priorities as well. I neglected to mention that during the council one. And the district manager goals, which were approved by the city council previously, are identical. And happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Is there any questions for Robert? All right. If there's none, we will invite public comment. There's none. Agency discussion.
But we have already kind of made our decision that.
I will entertain a motion, but?
I move that the city district manager's top priorities for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 is discussed during the annual council retreat on January 25th, 2023. An outline on the attached retreat summary be adopted as presented.
Can I hear a second? I've had a motion and a second. Any additional councillor discussion? There is none. I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Aye? Anybody opposed? There is none. It's on me.
It is.
All right, with this one here. Looks like considering appointment citizens to the Herbal Renewal Advisor Advisory Commission.
Sorry, it's just one, right?
Actually, no, there is two.
Two, well, Matt, but.
Yeah.
Did that come out like that, Matt?
I move that Roxy Obelby be appointed to the Herbal Renewal Advisor Commission for a three-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2025, and that Commissioner Matt Scarvo be appointed as the tax jurisdiction representative for the three-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2025. Any agency discussion? There is none. I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Aye? Anybody opposed? There is none. District manager comment.
Timothy, did you have anything? So just to let you know, I think I may have mentioned this at the retreat, but we are going to be convening the ERAC to go over policy tweaks for the call for projects traded sector kind of combined policy. Hope to have that to you shortly. To just kind of get our brain wrapped around exactly what that structure is going to look like. Essentially, we're taking the portion of the call for projects that provides different funding amounts for the business park out and then rolling that into the traded sector. So the traded sector call for projects, business park will kind of be a hybrid that will allow for funding requests throughout the year with potentially larger incentives using the current $200,000 that's budgeted for the traded sector and the 225 that's in the business park-specific call for project budgets. And our intent is to have the council, or sorry, the agency approve that revised policy in the coming months, and that will actually take effect as soon as that's done because we do have dollars budgeted this year. And the intent would be to roll those dollars, if they're not used, into the next year. And we'll see how that goes as an incentive, and hopefully we're able to utilize that. And that's really all I wanted to cover during the district manager comments. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Robert. Any agent members? What's that? I'm sorry. I don't want to stop before you.
Oh, no, I just didn't hear you. I couldn't hear you. That's all.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.